Join me rising for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. The witness stands unmoasted, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. We have three members that are excused this evening due to being travel various stages of travel. Dr. Zimmerman, Ms. Hanos and Ms. Lyons are all out of town. So we'll move forward announcements. The board met an executive session following the last meeting for forty five minutes to discuss. Procedure and personnel matters and the we met thirty minutes prior to the night's meeting to discuss personnel and personnel against both were personally. So with that, we'll move on to citizens with comments to the board on agenda items. Either present or online. Can I so you did you want to speak to an agenda item or a non agenda item? Well, that's an agenda item. So feel free to come up to the podium and speak your piece. Oh, well, that's fine.
Okay, they're looking at raising it seventy four dollars per hundred thousand dollar assessed on you of a house, correct?
I don't know. They we haven't made it. We haven't made a good turn.
Approximately seventy two for a hundred for a house assessed a hundred thousand. Yes.
Has anybody? Has anybody taken the time to find out how many people in the township or the borough are retired? How many are on a fixed income? How many have kids? I mean, I'm on a fixed income. I can tell you my neighbor across the street. And Erin knows this. Well, she knows that I know people because I walk my dog. My neighbor across the street is a retired teacher. The neighbor next to me is retired, a widow. The two neighbors on the other side of me are retired. Yeah, I live around a lot of Bucknell professors, Bucknell employees. Not everybody in East Buffalo Township and the borough work at Bucknell. We don't have this kind of money. I mean, the food's going up, gas is going up. Where do you think we're gonna get another seventy five bucks? You can't get blood from a rock. Do you think we can? Where's your rock? I mean, I know your rocks at Bucknell. I know your rocks at Brook Park. But come on, people. Do you live by yourself? Do you pay a mortgage and electric and sewage and water and garbage? How many of you live by yourself? If I were to go anywhere else and try and get a house? No, I wouldn't be able to pay for it. I wouldn't be able to pay all these bills. I love my house. I love my community. But there's so many people moving. There's so many people that can't afford this. Down Fourteenth Street, behind a Bucknell professor, is a retired lady. Besides her is a young couple. Beside them is another retired lady and another one on the other floor. Next to the church, an older lady just moved in. I mean, I can tell you where the Bucknell people live, but I can also tell you where a lot of retired people live. Have you thought about that? Tell me the last time you didn't go out for dinner. You couldn't take your kids and give them something because you didn't have the money. When? When was the last time you can honestly say, kids? We can't go to Florida. We can't go to Harrisburg shopping. I raised both of my boys on my own. Busted my tail before I ended up getting my diseases, but people can't afford this. The kids need to know and the parents need to know. There's a lot of stuff that can be cut. If you're gonna cut things from your budget at home, if the parents and the kids need to know. Look, if you can't afford hot dogs at home or you can't afford a good takeout meal, guess what? We're gonna have to cut a snack or something at school. We're gonna end up having to do something because the prices are going up. People cannot afford this. Please think about other people.
Thank you. Anybody online, John?
There's only one comment. It is on a non agenda item.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Our representatives are excused this evening. So we'll move on to board action. Old business first item being the twenty twenty two twenty three budget. John, I guess.
I think we need a motion in a second to discuss and then we can go from there.
Well, does anyone want to make a motion to discuss?
There's a presentation here. Usually we have the presentation and then there's like a slide.
That's what I thought was gonna happen.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, we can if you want to. Sure. So again, we'll share this online here. Okay, so just a quick summary of what's in the PDE twenty twenty eight form that's attached. The milage rate currently is eighteen point two three per one thousand dollars of assessed value. Right now, the proposed rate is eighteen ninety five, which is just below the Act One index. It's a three point nine five percent increase, a change of point seven two per thousand dollars of value. So yes, if your home is assessed at one hundred thousand dollars, it would be an increase of seventy two dollars in taxes. And again, I'm sorry, we haven't had a chance to discuss this prior to it, but now's a great time. So.
So rather than could we have a motion done to to discuss a percentage instead of a motion that actually includes a percentage? Because I think I feel like the there's people who want to have that discussion. Or we I suppose we could make the motion as presented at three nine five and then discuss if possibly it meant, I don't know what.
That's the motion. The motion is to approve and then then we can have discussion.
Well, then is there such a motion?
I can make the motion so we can start. Someone has to second.
All right, then discussion.
So I brought some options.
There we go. Let's see some options.
So I have options, whole bunch of options. I will share those here. So leave that up a little bit or zoom in a little bit. So right now, like I said, we're at three point nine five, which is the maximum we can go eighteen point nine five mils. And then the impact to a home assessed at a hundred thousand dollars is seventy two. And then I have some gradations down here by point zero one mils down to three point seven, three point five, three even, two point five and two. Now, again, this is the impact to folks with a hundred thousand dollar assessment. These here, the items in red would be the cuts we would need to make to the budget in order to balance everything out like we're required to under the law. And then just to give a general sense, the amount of the cuts needed, I provided a rough teacher FTE equivalent. So a rough full time teacher equivalent, not saying we would cut teachers, it's just a comparative tool, if you will. So.
All right. So let me just throw this out there because I did a little bit of homework yesterday. We know that Dr. Bow is leaving us and we're gonna have an interim period where we're not gonna be paying her salary and benefits. So for a year, that number comes to about two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars, slightly less. And then if we deduct that, there's a there's a there's a small amount that we have to deduct for the additional stipend we're gonna pay in the interim. And of course, you don't, we haven't made a decision about when we might hire a replacement and things like that. But there are additional positions in the budget that are budgeted for that we have never in my time on the board managed to successfully hire completely like custodians. Even though we want to hire them, they just just don't. I believe we have seven of those open right now.
Approximately, yeah.
So that's to the tune of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's actually built into the budget. Some portion of it, we will probably use, some portion of it could be used if we decide to move forward before the end of the year on the new superintendent. I guess what I'm saying is is there's there, there is about two hundred and six fifty eight thousand dollars worth of salary savings there to be had that we could consider. So that would put us somewhere in that neighborhood of a two and a half percent increase, which I I like that number a lot better than the three point nine five percent. So I just want to throw that out there for discussion. If anybody wants to counter me or offer a different.
It's Mary Ann. I don't think that's crazy. I just wanna understand. Because it feels like we're taking a little bit of a risk. So I just want to be clear that we and everyone in the room understands what happens if any of those numbers shift around. All of a sudden, we have a run on custodians or something. I just want to make sure we have the budget that we need and I'm not.
Yeah, that's that. That's why I wasn't suggesting we eliminate, really eliminate those 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 numbers. They they would still be there for a cushion.
Right.
So hypothetically, if we had seven people show up to work for as custodians, we could still hire them. We would just have to look elsewhere for if we wanted, if we wanted to hire a superintendent in two months, which.
Correct, which we correct. That makes so much sense to me. Thanks.
So and we know and we know that we can, we can go a full year with an interim position. We haven't made decisions about whether that will happen or not, and I don't think we're gonna make those decisions tonight. But I think we all know that, we all know that there is some cushion. There are, there, there is some areas where we can probably count on some savings. We've already pretty well robbed from the is it the capital fund? We did that to just to get where we are, but
Yeah.
we do, we do have a little bit of cushion and there's always risk.
John, what will be the transfer to capital this year because of savings? Well. I know it goes straight out again for HVC, but if, you know.
I I will be honest, it depends on where we end the year. So as we get through June thirtieth and then we tap the runoff of bills, that that's when we'll be able to determine what will be able to transfer right now in the budget at zero. But I do anticipate that in the Esser funding that we are getting for the HVAC, we already counted on that will be transferred in terms of what might remain at the end of the fiscal year. I I don't know. There might be a little bit. There might not. I'm not sure.
So we are running close to the bone in the in this year, just to make it clear that the budget for next year is based on this year. And so anticipating being close to the bone in the absence of someone to replace Jen, now you're assuming we will get no help for Kathy. Kathy does two jobs in your scenario.
No, I'm not. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that we will not wind up hiring seven custodians and we can use some of that money to help Kathy.
So I I like the idea of not going all the way to the index, but every time we don't increase taxes at least to keep up, we just kick the can down the road. The reason we're in the situation we're in right now with having to go to almost four percent is because we've had zero percent years. We've had very low years. We haven't kept up with inflation. We've got these extra fuel costs. We don't even know what that's gonna look like like next year, right? If we had done the surcharge that we only paid for two months for the entire school year, that's lots of money, right? And that's just one example. Food, everyone's food costs have gone up, so have ours. And next year, we will not have the universal reimbursement. I know food is separate, but just, you know, like.
But the general fund is on the hook to make good.
If there's a deficit, right, right.
Yes, that is correct.
So I don't want us to go too close to the bone because there are still some unknowns. I think fuel costs, I think food could have a deficit and there's other inflationary pressures, right? We just, everyone knows, we are locked in until when for our utility, for our electricity, sorry.
Well, actually, one of the things is the PP and L contract comes up in about six months. So this evening I'm asking the board to authorize me to try and negotiate something that we can hopefully lock in here.
But it's not, there's the kind of no chance it will be as favorable as it's been.
Most likely not. I mean, our current contract is four years old, so.
They just raised the rate something like forty percent.
Right. So I'm saying that that's why I want us to be very careful. And if we get we zero out everything, if we zero out the idea that food costs more, if we zero out the idea that there won't be fuel surcharges, if we think we're gonna get the same rate on gas and electricity, all of those things can't be true simultaneously.
I don't disagree with you. I don't feel like necessarily that we're zealing, zero anything out at at two and a half percent. I still feel like, I still feel like that that's a pretty good question and that that's before we even consider the idea that we just maybe don't buy something next year. Something that we've never actually done that I that I know of. I mean, we we.
Not buy something you've never ever done? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Well, so I'm gonna use that as my leadway. I I don't know. I think because it was brought up, I think we've cut a lot of places. I think there's a lot of parents who are also taxpayers who don't feel like their kids are getting what they're paying for. I was approached in just the past week of parents of special needs kids who feel that their students are not getting their needs met because of our staffing. I was approached by high school parents who feel that we are not providing the counseling support that their students need next year. So I think we, there are some spots we're not filling and there are some positions we're not hiring for to save our budget. And I think there are taxpayers who, every parent is a taxpayer, who feel that some of their students' needs aren't being met. And I think it it takes us to a slippery slope. I'm not disagreeing with what you're proposing, but I think, you know, to, you know, to say that we are not making cuts or we are not trying to, you know, stretch every penny as much as we can, I I don't think is accurate and I and I don't think that every taxpaying parent feels that we are providing everything he needs to.
I think I spoke poorly. I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to suggest, obviously, there have been positions that we have not filled. We've made those decisions. I was referring to, we've never, we've never undertaken the process and I hope we never do of cutting a program, cutting a teacher, telling, telling a teacher, no, you can't take a field trip. No, you can't do that. We have not done that. And I don't, I'm not advocating that we should. I'm just saying there there are, there are some options.
There are some expenses that we could probably take a closer look.
I'm sure there are always some, some expenses, maybe not hundreds of thousands of dollars worth. I hope there's not hundreds of thousands that are wastefully spent. I don't believe there are. But there's always, there's always some belt tightening that we could try to undertake if if we really got in a tight spot.
I think many of those concerns that you shared, Kristen, are being met in this budget with the positions that were, you know, the the AD position, for example, it's taking stuff off of the you know, the current role of special ed. I think we're gonna see a drastic improvement. And not that, I mean, that's maybe that, not in that position, not in that person, but I I think we're going to see a a better program come out of the changes that we've made. And I I think that we're doing everything that we, to the best of our abilities. I've made the comment before in meetings and I'll I'll say it again. I do think that that our community, the the demographics of our community are definitely changing. You know, we're seeing that in our students, we're seeing that across our community. I do think that the board has become less diverse when you're looking at socioeconomic status. And I just, you know, I've said it before, I just want to make sure that we are considering everybody in our community. And I'm, I'm afraid at the three point nine five percent, we're not taking into consideration everybody in our community.
And I don't disagree with you, but I don't want to get to a point that five years down the road, we're looking at something even more drastic than that because we didn't do what we needed to do now.
You've been mine, we raised them last year two point nine percent.
Well, I didn't. I wasn't on the board yet.
Any other discussion?
I guess I'd just like to point out that I think that we have that we have an incredibly thoughtful board and an incredibly thoughtful administration that has been playing a bit of a game of Jenga with trying to figure out positions and budget and how to create a position where before we could not afford one. So I I really do believe very strongly that everybody on this board is well intentioned in this process. And that the balance has to come in not only the community and what the taxpayers are paying, but what we are giving to our students and to the teachers who are part of this community and the staff. And I don't think there's one single person on this board who's not trying to weigh all of those things.
Is there?
I'll share. I think two point five is too low. I think we don't need to go to three.
Do you have a alternative?
Wait, say, I'm sorry, you said two point five.
Two point five, we can't only do two point five because it like, there's just no way we will escape.
Second part.
We, I don't, we, we could do less than three.
Got it. That's what I said, but I just.
So which number in between those two, would you feel comfortable with?
Because I actually think we're not going to have much, we're probably just maybe going to touch two hundred thousand in savings. I think two point nine is a responsible number. There's, there's too many unknowns. I hate that we have an any energy contract coming up in this season. It's just not a good time. And I know we put it off to the last minute to like, or you know, I'm not the last night, but we, I know we put it off till we know that it's favorable rates and to lock in. But even so, favorable in the current climate is just.
It's not favorable.
Yeah.
We also don't know what the energy bills are gonna look like adding air conditioning.
Right, exactly.
Do we have any type of guess as far as out of district tuition? I mean, obviously, it's just a guess, but I mean.
Honestly, no, it it's, it's so, I hate to use the word random, but it really is random.
But I mean, to bring up something else, and I know we've talked about losing property value because of certain things, but I hope that the county would respond with something that allows us to think about how we might gain property value, right? With reassessments, with new construction.
We, and we do have the latest figures included in the budget.
Yeah, but that's with.
New construction and.
Right, but but not any improvements assessment or exchange of like how as property changes hands and you have a new assessed value like that. If we had that captured, I think we'd be all right, but that would be a nice thing to have from the county.
I also think this might be, this is not a discussion. I mean, it is budget. It's about the budget, but I think it's a great time to revisit some pilot programs with some of our organizations that continue to benefits, the wrong word, but that that is using the tax exempt status. I think it's not a bad idea to revisit some pilot programs and see if some organizations are willing to contribute a payment in lieu of taxes pilot for the short acronym. I think it's a great idea to revisit those because I'm not sure those conversations have happened anytime recently. Whether or not that would come to fruition, that's a different story, but I think it's you know, as we continue to see property, you know, we're not gaining any, any, you know, capacity for properties, but we're with some of the recent sales, you know, we're, we're losing some property values. And you know, also compensating some by improvements properties as well, but.
Well, and we've also lost compensation from a couple of businesses that
Right.
are larger than we'd like.
So.
Two point nine percent will put your millage at eighteen point seven six, so.
And what is that number per one hundred thousand?
So that would be fifty three dollars.
Yes.
What would two point seven be just for? As long as we're haggling.
Are you trying to get to four dollars a month? Is that your goal here, Corey?
I'm trying to get as low as I can.
Safely, a safe flow.
Yes, roughly eighteen point seven two mils, so that would take you down to forty nine dollars.
Let's try to hit fifty.
Can you sleep at night with two point seven there? I mean, you you crunch these, I know you know these numbers probably better than any of us.
The problem is there are, there are still variables, John, if we have a surprise.
But there are always variables, are there?
Right, but there's, but these are unique, these are unique circumstances, right? Eight percent year over year inflation is a unique circumstance in in decades of time. But if we have surprises, obviously, we have our fund balance. We never want to go there, right? That makes you cringe.
Yeah, I'll say it also means we get audited, so.
Right.
But it's there.
It is there. Do you see anything changing with the state, a change in funding? No, probably not, especially not in this given year.
Likely, and and if they do, I mean, I don't mean to be cynical, but if the state were to say, oh, yes, we have some extra money this year, we'll give it to you. You can bet the following year, it would be gone. I I don't like to count on anything from Harrisburg. Yeah, and when they give it an election year, they take away in a non-election year.
And I want to amplify Tara's point. We don't know how much it's gonna cost in air conditioning, but remember that saves us the potential for mold, which would be millions of dollars damaged. So we are always weighing costs and benefits.
So hypothetically speaking, if we went two point seven and it caused us to dip into the fund balance to make up the difference and then we got audited, what does that mean in real terms?
That means.
We don't see John for a month.
It it just means that the auditor, what, when you dip into the fund balance, what that means is you spend more than you take in.
Correct.
You, you have higher expenses than you do revenue. And you're basically the Department of the Auditor General comes in and they examine your books and they look at why, what happened? Was there, you know, malfeasance or anything? I mean, there.
Was there eight percent inflation?
Yeah, was there eight percent inflation? Did kids go to cyber school that you didn't know about? You know, back in twenty fifteen sixteen, when the state took nine months to pass a budget, we actually had to dip a little bit into our fund balance and our excuse was, hey. Together, so, yeah.
But is there, is there a fine? Does it cost us money?
Not necessarily, no.
I mean, assuming we didn't like do it recklessly, it's something beyond our control that we we couldn't look into our crystal ball and guarantee was gonna happen.
Now, to answer Tara's question, could we get to fifty dollars? That would be two point seven five percent.
I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I'm comfortable with the red number that comes out, too. I think we're gonna have to round in the tens of thousands rather than the hundred thousand mark, and that makes me less uncomfortable.
Is there anybody that would like to weigh in on a two seven five? Just so I have an idea.
Just to be public, we we are kicking the can down the road.
I I don't think there's anybody that doubts that. I mean, maybe somebody listening out in cyberspace or somebody sitting here might doubt it, but I mean, you're, you're correct. We are. I mean, every year when we do this, it's precisely what we do.
Before, but before we, anybody considers two point seven five, do you remember when we looked at the maintenance schedule? Before, but before we, anybody considers two point seven five, um, do you remember when we looked at the maintenance schedule? And we said some things had been like deferred maintenance, we wanted to make sure we had those, we weren't gonna issue new bonds, right? We were gonna try to actually pay for those out of capital, but we haven't been putting money in capital. What happens if we get to the point, three years from now, where we haven't contributed to the capital fund? We've got a huge deferred maintenance project to do. We don't want to take on more debt service because then it ends up costing us twice as much in the long run. What, what is the?
If, if there isn't money in the capital projects fund, then you, if the work has to be done, then you would have to take on debt. I mean, there really wouldn't be much other way around it.
When we just issued this nine million dollar bond, right? We talked about trying not to do this again for a while. Because we were refinancing and just getting ourselves to the same level. Which felt responsible in the moment.
It always feels responsible in the moment.
But I think that we need to have some, I mean, responsibility to all the taxpayers too. I mean, I, I'm, I'm a parent, I, I'm a business owner, I pay taxes. I don't want to raise my taxes anymore than the next person, but right, but at the same time, I want quality schools, I want quality education, I don't want my kids to miss out. You know, there's no way to, to meet everyone perfectly, so I think that you know, three point nine five, I, I'm not comfortable with, and I know that that's zero, and I, and I understand what you're saying, Aaron, and I get it because you know, we went and visited Sun Tech there and that everyone's in the same situation, I mean, I don't, I don't think that I don't think we're in this situation because of anything we've done. Ludicrous, you know, it's not, it's not like we're, we've, we've raised wages exponentially, we've, you know, done anything. I mean, even the school we're sitting in, we know how much we, we've looked at every single penny that went into the school, and it had to make sense or we didn't do it. Um, we, we don't make rash decisions, we, we don't, um. Uh, we are thoughtful, we always have been, I mean, the times that we did zero, zero percentages, which have been at least three times when I was on the board. Maybe that was actually irresponsible more than raising it, but you know, we, we have done that, I get it. I don't think we can do that anymore, um, which stinks. But I, I can't look at the people that I see every day that are choosing between their medications and their, you know, be, because they, they don't have the money, um, in their, in their house or whatever. So I do think we need to make a true shot at decreasing it, where we're still in a comfort zone to some degree. But and I mean, John's gonna have to answer that probably more than any of us, as far as the comfort zone.
You tell me what you would like me to do, we'll do our best to meet it.
Where do we expect our capital reserve account to shake out after the HVAC project?
Anyone, I would estimate roughly anywhere between two and three million, depending.
That's one roof and one floor.
Right, so we're also waiting on the, uh, I forget what it's called.
Warm, safe, dry.
Warm, safe, dry study, which will come back this fall. And if they find anything anywhere that says.
That's why I just, yeah.
You need to do this. What do we do if we don't have the funds to do what they tell us we have to do for warm, safe, dry buildings?
Debt.
Yeah, we.
We take on more debt.
Yeah, we, we use what's in the capital project fund and then we would take on more debt. Now, I, I will say that Mr. Gallegos and the maintenance crew and our outside contractors have been doing their best even before the warm, safe, dry setting to make sure that our buildings, you know, are up to snuff.
Yeah, no, they always, yeah.
I don't want the impression after that we're just like letting everything fall.
No, no, no.
We're, we're making do as best we can.
There, there's never any guarantee, so we, we could, we could pass a four percent budget increase and we could get hit with something unexpected that exceeds our capital book. But there's, there's no way to definitively know that.
Hindsight's always twenty twenty, and I mean, in March of twenty twenty, the world changed drastically. And you know, I don't regret a zero percent tax increase, but Tara, you're, you're right, I mean, but at the time, that's what felt right because we, there were a lot of people not working at the time. And so we did what we thought was right in the time. Looking back, was it, who knows, looking back, you know, two or three years. This vote tonight could be very wrong, but you know, it, to me, a three point nine five does not feel right.
I don't think anyone's going for a three point nine five.
Here's what I would say about the unknown, due to the fact that we have always very carefully managed our funds and we keep our, and our debt is where it is. God forbid, we get hit with something that we can't absorb, we have the ability to get the funds.
Yeah.
Because we have excellent credit. I don't, I'm not advocating for that, I don't want that to happen because obviously it's not gonna be beneficial to us. But we have the ability to do it, it, there is a cushion there, it's not working without a net. Hopefully, we never come to that.
So are we good at two point seven five as I motion for that, or is that?
Is there anybody who wants to argue against two seven five before we amend the motion?
Just John and his calculator.
I'm not arguing, just make.
Of course, we picked the number that John didn't put on his.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't give you enough granulation, I apologize.
Yeah, next time, can you get, take it down like that?
I'll take the eight point one.
Sorry.
You want to know what, you want to hear the members before we amend?
No.
Yeah. So at two point, um, roughly two point seven five, your millage rate would be eighteen point seven three. And the increase uh would be approximately point five zero mils, which on a one hundred thousand dollar assessed home will be fifty dollars.
amended motion, man?
Mary, uh, sorry. There we go.
Did you hear the rest part?
No, you guys froze and I had to restart.
So there was an amended motion and a second for a two point seven five percent increase.
Excellent.
I was about to call for a vote.
And that was village at eighteen point seven three.
Since, since I've lost you all back up, did you have anything you wanted to add to the discussion at two seven five?
No, I was on board, thank you.
All right. Paula, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon is not on?
She is not on, no.
Uh, Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Untaker Fisera?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
No.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the tax levy resolution.
Okay, um, I would ask that you approve this this evening amended with the new military of eighteen point seven three as just approved by the board. So that would be my request for the decision, and we'll modify the paperwork accordingly.
Second.
And the motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Paula, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Marion, you're muted.
Are you with us, Marion?
Oh, well, maybe come back to her.
Okay. Dr. Untaker Fisera?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Are you there, Marion?
Yeah, I'm really sorry, it keeps freezing on me, maybe I could just do the dial in.
Okay, we, we were just, we, we just voted on the tax levy resolution, if you would like to give a yea or a nay. That, that was based on what we just set the.
Yeah. Yay.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the homestead, farmstead resolution.
I would ask that you approve this this evening. Um, the positive news with the Act One uh property tax rebate is that for the first time since Act One was passed in two thousand and six. So approximately sixteen years ago, they actually increased our property tax allocation reduction for the first time in sixteen years. Um, so I would ask that you approve this so we can get the extra money, return it to the folks who have this exemption. Um, but do it at the revised millage rate, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Why did they update this and not property values?
It, it, it's at the state level.
Okay.
I'm not sure where the money came from.
We can vote on this and then, oh no, there's no free time to speak, so this is terrible to say, if the state puts out a multiplier that you can do on old property values. Is that a reasonable thing to do before the coming year so that we would be able to capture new property value?
Again, that all depends on the county assessment.
Okay, so we only can do it if the county does it.
Exactly, yeah, we have to, they're the ones that keep the numbers, we have to play with their numbers.
That's what we talked about.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Paula, please.
Ms. Stan?
Yes.
Dr. Untaker Fisera?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to new business, the designation of an acting superintendent.
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Roll call vote, Paula, please.
Dr. Untaker Fisera?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, the agreement for services for the acting superintendent.
Motion to approve, wait, is that not the thing we just did?
No.
I'm sorry, the next one, yeah.
First we hired him.
Yeah.
Is there?
I zoned out for a second.
Second.
I was reading.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion to the, to that? Hearing none, Paula, roll call vote, please.
Doc, uh, Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Untaker Fisera?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item would be the renewal for the energy contract, which I believe we alluded to earlier. This would authorize John to do some negotiations, correct?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there discussion?
Good luck.
Thank you, that's why we do the six months ahead, so that we have enough time to hopefully nail something.
Probably is totally fine.
Oh, I have no problem.
Any other discussion on that topic? Uh, roll call vote, Paula.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Untaker Fisera?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to new business, brace yourself, Erin. Baseball field repairs, John, educate us if you would.
Yes, so, um, you have for you the proposal from the good people at uh Hummer uh turf uh turf grass systems for renovations for the baseball field. And the bottom line is that uh in the current configuration, the baseball field itself is not tenable, it's not maintainable, if you will, it's not built the way it should be in order for it to be maintained properly. Now, as we requested the board to do earlier uh in the season. We made some emergency repairs to the infill of the infield of the baseball to bring that level back up. But in order for our baseball field to be a I don't know how I want to say.
It's for it to be in proper playing condition where it's first and foremost safe for the players and to the performance of um, any fielding that's, that the athletes would be doing with, the ball's gonna bounce the way you expect it to. Um, so what we're doing here is um the, the renovation, the, the temporary fix that we did is not undone because that included a lot of infield mix that would be removed. The infield would be regraded, so it's graded properly. An additional draining, drainage would be added to the infield along with sod. Um, infield again, the current condition is such that we don't have the appropriate drainage that we need for the conditions of the land that just exists as it does here. Plus, um, just what happens in central Pennsylvania in the spring, we're going to get a lot of moisture. So the field won't dry and sometimes that additional water and all that then starts to undo whatever's built up for the infield. There are two separate pieces to it, the first is the infield renovation and then the drainage, that would be one piece. The second piece would be then to address the outfield, which needs significantly more drainage. So it just needs a different system and it needs a lot more of it.
So since they participated in that committee, meaning like, essentially, it all comes down to grading and drainage, just, just like they said. So the proposal is they would put a regrade, as Jen said, regrade the, the infield so the water runs away from the playing surface to the outer edges in the outfield that every ten feet, I believe it was, there's actually a drainage tile that goes in with you know, sand or like stone or something like that, it basically allows water to go down and go into the, the tile and get carried away. Which doesn't happen now at all, all the drainage now essentially happens via the sun and wind because water just sits out there. Um, unfortunately.
So you would, yeah, and Corey is correct, right now, if we get a heavy rain, it takes approximately anywhere from two to three to four days for the outfield to dry. Whereas with this new drainage system, even if you get a heavy rain in the morning, you could, you could most likely play on the field in the afternoon.
The, the other thing would be is that the, the dirt that's in the infield and the part that's not covered with grass, they would replace that with a a proper mix that, that drains better, that's used in baseball fields.
And they will be reusing the infill that we use for the emergency area, so it will be recycled, if you will, as part of this renovation.
The, the other piece of this, that if, if there is a light to the end of the tunnel is, there's at least the possibility that we could get some reimbursement. That's a decision that would have to come from Green Dragon that we don't have any control over. But I know there have been discussions and the possibility exists, so this could be an expenditure that ultimately comes back to us, or at least some, or at least some portion.
How, when would we know if Green Dragon is?
Green Dragon's currently exploring kind of, they first need to understand what this would be.
Right.
The board first wants to even pursue any of this, and then that would be a discussion with um Green Dragon to see what they would be able to support financially to make it right. I can tell you that their intention is completely for it not to just be a very good space in terms of the dugout and for the purpose that it was designed and built in the first place and memorial to Brandon Cram. But it's also that it's a playing surface that meets the needs of the students, yeah.
So, so there's that piece, and you know, again, we'd have to act on a little bit of faith there whenever we come to a decision and we're not, we're not voting on this this evening, correct?
Purely for informational purposes.
So timeline, when does this need to be done to have it playable?
We would, uh, we, basically, if we were to bring it back at the next board meeting, if you gave us the approval, we would get in touch with the folks at Hummer. Uh, they would most likely schedule the work probably late summer, early fall in order to get the work done, get the grass in, you know, reseeded, that sort of thing. Give it a chance to take hold in the fall and then hopefully, uh, you know, in the spring, we water it and it fingers crossed it'll grow in the spring.
And I would add that this, this particular company, um, when we learned of get, just getting somebody that has an expertise in athletic fields specifically. Um, the individual we're working with was actually at Bucknell checking out their field at the same time, so it was an easy way for him to swing and be able to take a look and assess. This company does nothing but athletic fields, so they do the initial baseball fields for school districts, colleges, universities, triple A.
Head states.
They did the little.
Little League World Series, and they also do this remediation, so we're not the first and only people that have ever, you know, tried to do a field and they're taking into consideration what the fixes here might look completely different in. in southeastern PA or in Maryland. I mean, it's just different weather conditions and soil conditions. And we have to keep in mind that everything around us in terms of our athletic conflicts, we have pockets of wetland that are here and there. And that is always going to be a challenge when we're doing any kind of build out there. So good that we, you know, establish relationship, at least in consultation with this group. They, they will always recommend to do any kind of repair on a field late summer and fall, as John said, just because of grass growing. The outfield would be reseeded, but it wouldn't be sod. So they want to give time for that grass to get some solid roots, go dormant and then come back in the spring.
Have we had any issues since we did the fixes to the soccer field? I mean, that has truly fixed.
To my knowledge, yes. Yep.
Do we have any concerns that with redirecting a lot of this moisture with retention ponds and everything? I mean.
The, the retention ponds that are behind the baseball field were designed specifically for this. Actually, the current drainage doesn't get the water there. So the retention ponds were actually built for this purpose. So we should be good to go from a, from that standpoint.
Any other questions? Are we comfortable having this on the agenda for the next meeting? There's nothing, I'm assuming, yes.
I don't know if I am. I mean, I think I need more information from Green Dragon Foundation.
We can try to get the.
Yeah. Because I mean, we're talking about budgets and money and this is insanity, in my opinion, to spend this much money on.
The Penn Literacy Network.
So this is a proposal. There's scope of work. So there's, think of it a bit as à la carte. There are prices that are listed for different pieces that the district might engage with them to do. Last year, we began professional development around literacy. We shifted to SEL as the needs presented themselves. Teachers are taking coursework in SEL for certificate program. We have eleven to twelve that are participating in that now. With the expansion of this partnership, we do is provide that coursework as well as additional coaching for the teachers who are participating to develop and implement at all of the buildings across all grade levels, professional development for teachers. So this is turnkey professional development in SEL. And, you know, that lines up very much with where we're talking about our equity work and professional development there. There's also an opportunity for paraprofessionals to receive specialized training. And that's something that comes at a request from our paraprofessionals where, you know, they certainly need the twenty continuing hours every year in order to meet the requirements of PDE. But to get them something that's more specific and closer to what the teachers have is they're the ones who are often the first ones working with and responding to students that are having some difficulties. And, you know, it would empower them and certainly be a much better experience for them to have the skills to know what to do and what to say to students. But then also for the students on the other end of that to feel the level of support that they need. So this is just here for presentation and information right now.
That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Okay. So this is actually my final official report and under the agenda under superintendent report. I want to thank the school board certainly for all of their support and their collaboration over these past two years. We have nine people who are really dedicated to the education of the students, the care of the staff, which is also very important. This board is responsible fiscally, certainly forward thinking. There's a lot we just saw this evening with having to wrangle, we're anticipating what might happen in the future as well as what our present conditions and concerns are right now. And I think we found a way to meet in the middle with that. So I really truly want to thank you. I don't, a lot of superintendents cannot say that they have nine school directors who, with whom they would never want to see any one of those board members leave. And they're oftentimes in other kinds of conditions. But I've been fortunate enough to not have that experience and have the best possible experience with this board. Also want to thank the administration for all of their hard work. It's really difficult to come into a district over COVID because we really just had to get schools opened and be in emergency mode, at least for a year and a half of my tenure here. And, you know, tremendous amount of work on their part. Also to our teachers and our support staff. You know, that this has been probably the most challenging year, more challenging than the year prior. And I'm happy that they have a well-rested vacation and I'm happy that the faculty and staff will be returning to two or three buildings that'll be certainly a lot more comfortable and have much better air quality when they return back in August. And most of all, thank you Kathy and John. I think in a lot of respects, like it is, it's, it might be me and my name on things, but a lot of this is discussion and bouncing ideas and really pushing and testing and thinking things through and without good thought partners, the way that you are. You know, we certainly wouldn't have seen some of the successes that we had this year. I don't, I couldn't do it without you. And I don't know how I'm going to continue to do it without you, but I will figure it out. And, you know, certainly Kathy, you know, we work hand and glove and I think this is going to be a seamless transition for the district. HVAC is well underway, as I mentioned, in a preliminary meeting with the superintendent and the project manager from McClure. We're, we're on schedule. Things that we need are on the way. There's no concerns on their part. They have been wonderful to work with and they commended the district staff in many districts where they go in for these types of projects. People didn't quite take down and store the things they were supposed to or they're still lingering. That wasn't the experience here. Our folks really did what they had to do to take their personal items and make sure they're secured. We don't have people all over the buildings and they're able to work around them and be accommodating. And it's, it's almost as though you don't know that they're there. And, you know, hopefully that continues through the summer and they remain on track. And, you know, certainly for everybody out there just to enjoy the summer. Thank you.
Any board and, please, as on committee reports this evening? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that everyone would like held out separately?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
We bought that shed.
Oh, didn't we? Didn't even see that. Thank you for.
That's being reimbursed by the PSA.
Thank you.
That's the only way, Deborah, we agree to it, otherwise.
Paul, we have a roll call vote on this agenda, please.
Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Untaker Fisera?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I believe that brings us to director's comments. Marion, would you like to start so I don't forget you?
Of course. Really, I just want to take a half a second here to thank Dr. Ba for all she's done, for coming in at such a really incredibly difficult time and for leading so ably and thoughtfully and being so considered in the decisions that she makes. Thank you for that, for being a good human. And we'll miss you. I'll miss you. And thank you so much, Kathy, for stepping in. We're incredibly grateful for you. And that's it for me. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, I would echo Marion and think Dr. Ba. I've enjoyed getting to know you over these past few months and working with you. And thank you to Kathy for being willing to take this on. And we, it had to be you. So we are so glad that you are staying. I guess I appreciate everyone's working together to come to a compromise on the budget tonight. But I am not going to hide that I have concerns about our ability to meet the needs of the students in our district. I am a special ed teacher at heart and trained. And I work in early childhood education. And we have a huge need. And there are families that are leaving our area for various reasons. And one of them being that the district is not meeting their child needs. It's not all about money, but being able to put the able, capable bodies with the students that need them unfortunately does involve some money. And I just think we, we need to be careful of that. And that's it. Echo all the comments so far. I'm gonna miss you. I think you've done an amazing job coming in and I'd really like to know your secret of getting the pulse of the district and the town as quickly as you did because I was astounded by that.
They were not shy. It was really easy.
That's good in a way, I guess. I, I am excited for some of the changes that you've helped to, to spark and overseen. And I am happy that Kathy's was your hand in the glove or the glove in the hand, whichever you just, whichever role you guys played because I, I you've done this before. I have full confidence and need to do it again and maybe better even. And hopefully you know that we have our support and that's why we're here. As far as the, the budget, it's one of our main jobs and it's also the crummiest part of our job. I'd much rather be sitting out there where you guys are and, and grumbling about the budget the other way because I, I do. I can see every side of it, every side of it. I do appreciate the discussion because rep that came into our office was, was supposed to be at a different place tonight. And, and he's like, well, just be like our board. And when the tough questions come, you guys leave the room, right? And I was like, no, we don't, you know, and that's in Pennsylvania. So I do think that we try. We're not perfect and we're not going to ever make anyone happy all the time or everyone happy even part of the time. But we genuinely try to listen. We genuinely try to make compromise. And we all don't always agree, but we are a team and we try to work together when a decision is made. And I appreciate that because otherwise we wouldn't get anywhere. And I do hope that people aren't leaving our district because of those reasons. It makes me sad. But at the same token, maybe that's what we need to open our eyes and make some changes and make it better. Because I think that we were always at the top for so long. And sometimes you need to kind of realize, oh, we do have some competition and we do need to keep striving. So I think, I think we're there. I think we can do it. And I kind of wish you were still going to be here, but keep looking us up. And that's it.
Jordan, I don't think there's anything else I have to.
You're here for one more meeting, right?
Okay.
I'll agree with everything that's said and the you all know I make spreadsheets, right? Like I said, I want to think a lot about this. And so Corey had a unique take on it. I was headed in a different direction for savings or for, for thinking about what was feasible. But I think we landed at something that is, of course, not palatable to everyone, but favorable in the conditions we're in. And so, John, looking to you to do the thing where you have the minimum increase in all our normal expenditures.
We'll try.
Thank you. And I, I mean, Kathy, just thank you. Thank, you are going to end up with two jobs for a while and I know what that feels like. And I just have so much respect and gratitude.
I, I know we'll probably say it again next time, but I'll thank you, Jen, for, for the time you spent with us. I think you did good things while you were here. Wish you were staying. Kathy, I'm glad you are staying. Some, somebody has to do all that work. And I know we can count on you. So with that, are there any citizens' comments to the board on a non-agenda item?
I have at least one online and I think we may have one.
Unless you had another.
Okay. We have one comment on a non-agenda item from Kimberly Drexler. She writes, after the last school board meeting, I thought the board would be taking up the proposed revisions to the schedule at middle school. I do not see that on the agenda. However, I want to state my conviction that revising the middle school schedule at this time would be a dire mistake. Our kids have had enough uncertainties and disruptions over the past two years. They could not need further changes to their school day at this time. Additionally, I have heard from teachers, other parents and students that the proposed changes would be exactly the wrong thing to do. I agree. We need to listen to our teachers and we need to provide more support for music and arts, not less. I hope the board will approach any changes to the middle school schedule thoughtfully and cautiously. I also want to urge the board to take its time in finding a new superintendent. Please do not rush this selection. We need someone who is committed to our kids, our school and our community. Please take the time to find someone who will make that commitment of their own time and talents to LASD. Thank you. That's it.
All right. With that, I can entertain them on tour.
I, I know you didn't.
Oh, I apologize.
Well, don't, don't, don't. I, I do want to express however my gratitude for the faith, the confidence, the belief you have. And it's not always we have someone among us that I should take the minute in the audience. But if you would stand, please, and introduce yourself. This is our coming on board soon environmental science teacher who traveled from Mealy'sburg to make his face and name acquainted to you. Please introduce.
Hi, I'm Alan Oliver. So I'm the candidate for the environmental science position. I just wanted to put a face to the name when you saw me on a agenda item. I'm in the future. I'm really excited to be here at Roseburg.
And thank you.
You came to the best meeting when we talked about. One more could you, one more could you ask for?
Wouldn't be interested in taking a little less, would you? Anything else before we entertain a motion to adjourn? Anybody?
Oh, yeah, second or whatever.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?